Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started this evening. It is two minutes after six where I am, maybe two minutes after seven, eight, or nine, wherever you are. But we want to welcome you to the very first virtual town hall meeting hosted by your At-Large Tribal Councilors Mary Baker Shaw and myself, Julia Coates. Thank you all for your interest tonight, and thank you so much for being here and the questions you have submitted and for taking time out of your evening to do this. We're just gonna do some quick introductions of ourselves. I think that many of you have met us or encountered us through meetings we've done or something like that. But I am Julia Coates. I am the newly-elected tribal counselor. I've served two terms previously and then set out for a term, and so I've been back on for about two months now at this point. I live in Los Angeles, and that is where I'm coming to you from this evening. Your other counselor is Mary Shaw, and she has been on the council for three years already, so she is the senior counselor, tribal At-Large tribal counselor at this point. And Mary, do you want to introduce yourself for a couple minutes?
Well, hello. I'm Mary Baker Shaw, and I am excited you joined Julia and I tonight. We are hoping that we'll be able to do this on a regular basis to share what's happening with our tribal council and what's happening within our tribe. You know, this is my third year as serving as your tribal counselor-at-large, and I'm really excited that I get to share this year with someone who is as like-minded with me as Counselor Julia Coates. And I'm hoping to learn a lot from Julia. I know many of you all are very aware that we probably wouldn't have the At-Large communities had it not been for the groundwork that Julia did to make it possible. So I'm really excited about all the possibilities we've got this year. You know, we have, it's a new administration, and I'm encouraged by a lot of the things that are happening and that we're hearing. And we look forward to answering your questions tonight. I'll turn it back to Julia.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so people have been submitting questions through our website for the last couple of weeks, and we've received a lot of questions which we've tried to, some of them have been similar, some of them have been, you know, in the neighborhood and so forth. So we are trying to kind of combine these into subject areas. So there are several subject areas this evening that we will go to. And then down at the bottom of your screen, you should see something that says chat, and that is where you can submit questions as well. I think we're gonna go through the ones that have already been submitted to us first, and then after that, we will kind of double back around and look at the chat and see what other questions may have come in. So in no particular order, we're gonna start out with the subject of language, and we've got a couple of questions about language here. And the first one is, "Will the new language program that the chief signed into law be available for the At-Large citizens?" And my understanding about this is this is an enhancement predominantly of already-existing programs, plus some capital expenditures for buildings and so forth. And Counselor Shaw may have some additional understandings if I'm incorrect about any of that, but I think that the things that are going on already in terms of the online language courses, which have always been open to the At-Large people, of course, will be expanded and enhanced somewhat, and that we're also gonna be expanding the whole Master Apprentice Program, I believe they call it, is that right? With some additional instructors in training. This program has kind of been established to feed the immersion school, to feed teachers into the immersion school. But if anyone, as my understanding, is willing to move to Talaqua and immerse themselves in this program for a couple of years, it would absolutely be open. Mary, do you have things you want to add about that you likely know a little bit more about it than I do?
Well, I think there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for At-Large once they get the programs all developed. I know right now, they shared with us that they're working with Microsoft and with a lot of the big companies who are big in technology right now. And I know that they're hopeful that there will be a children's book that reads in Cherokee, you know, with the pages, available for sale before Christmas, and I'm excited about that myself, as I have three young grandchildren. But I really think there's some exciting things to come.
All right. And am I correct that some of this is designated for additional buildings to really try and grow the...
Oh, absolutely, Julia. They've got, that's like on the top burner, I think, right now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We are getting a lot of background noise, so I wanted to remind people to mute your microphone on your computers. Okay, well, I don't know where that's coming from. The second question around language that we received was, "Why are we not supporting external groups outside the Cherokee Nation as they develop language applications and programs? Why does the Cherokee Nation not give grants and open this up? Our language is for all, and the government should not be the only voice in revitalization." And as a PS, it says this person loves the PIN videos. And for those of you who have not seen them yet, the PINS project is beginning to put some language videos, which are really fun and really cute, on the website. They're also on my Facebook page. They may be on yours too, Mary, I'm not sure, but anyway, take, check those out. In terms of the question, there is certainly more to do around our language than any single entity can do, and I think that that includes the Cherokee Nation. I know that the PINS project, for one, is very, very interested in some applications that are being developed in conjunction with us. At this time, we have contracted with some native language speakers in the Cherokee Nation to do some things that are a little bit different. There are a number of places out there where you can go and learn the language in various manners. But the thing that the PINS project is working on is the software by which you can perfect your pronunciation. And I'm not aware of anything like that that really exists right now that you can just use and practice with at home, so that's one thing, for instance, that we're doing independently of the Cherokee Nation. But I certainly agree that the Cherokee Nation could be and should be looking at additional types of resources, but we don't have to try and assume this all ourselves, that there are other people, other organizations out there that are willing to help, and we should begin building those partnerships. Mary, do you have anything to add to that?
No, but I think that project's really exciting, especially when you figure the pronunciation is pretty much the heart of saying the words, and I'm really excited about that.
Okay. So those are the language questions that we received in advance, and now we want to move to the topic of health. And this was a big one, as you might imagine, and I'm gonna kind of give Mary the lead on this one, because as you may know, she does chair the Health Committee of the Tribal Council, and she has a career as a nurse and in many other aspects of health as well. So she's much better able to respond to some of these than I am. So Mary, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thanks, Julia. You know, the first question that was asked was, "Will the health and wellness program also be available for At-Large citizens?" Well, I checked with Lisa Pivik today, and Lisa's the Director of our Public Health, and she wanted everyone to know that Public Health does provide a range of individual and community-based services. It includes breast and cervical cancer screenings, there's wings, physical therapy, and activity programs, as well as a community-based partnership offering health and wellness programs. They also offer things like immunizations and diabetic instruction, as well as nutrition. There's a lot of programs, and At-Large are invited to be involved in these programs if you can get to these programs. So yes, At-Large can be involved, providing they are able to attend these functions. A second question I was asked, "When can the spouse of a Cherokee Nation member get health treatment at our treaty facilities?" And the answer to that is it has to do with, you know, obstetrics, obviously, prenatal care, delivery, postnatal care is always going to be provided to the spouse of a native, and that is always gonna be available through Indian Health Services, including Cherokee Nation. Other than that, I don't believe there's any care available at this time for health treatment for a spouse who is not native or Cherokee. But there will be care provided to that baby once it is born. Again, that's prenatal, delivery, and postnatal care that will be provided, and we're happy it is. Julia, would you like to add anything onto that?
No, that's the extent of it through the Cherokee Nation right now, and I would add, and it just occurred to me while you were talking, that the health and wellness programs and some of those things might be very good presentations that could go out to the At-Large community organizations, you know, if there were Cherokee Nation personnel who might be willing to travel a little bit and present those.
That's a great idea. I really like that one. The third question, it really wasn't a question, but it was something that someone wanted addressed, and I'm gonna read it. It says, "I am contacting you as the concerned tribal member who happens to have a lot of knowledge about the application process for Social Security benefits. In order to obtain medical records assigned, 827 is included with each request to a health facility. Because a lot of people now file by phone or online, this 827 is generally signed electronically. The Cherokee Nation has elected to not accept the electronic signature as a valid signed release at facilities such as Hastings and Redbird Smith. What this means to tribal members to receive care at these facilities and also apply for Social Security benefits is both a significant delay in processing these claims and requiring those claimants to travel at what can be a large distance for exams and scheduled with another health facility." Well, I checked this out today, because I wanted to know the exact answer on this, so I had it correctly. And I reached out to Elizabeth Odell. She is the Senior Assistant Attorney General, and this is her response. "Online Social Security applicants do include the authorization for release of medical records, but that release only includes the typed name of the patient, not an actual signature. It is not that we do not accept copied or scanned signatures on authorizations, it is that these types of authorizations do not actually include a signature. HIPAA requires that we have a signed authorization before we can release records. This issue should not delay care or the release of the records if the patient requests an authorization from any Cherokee Nation facility and sends it back in. Cherokee Nation even accepts authorizations that are not on... as long as the authorization is HIPAA compliant and signed by the patient." So I hope that answers her question, so that she'll understand that, you know, they will not take the electronic signature. You can sign a name, fax it in, and it will work. The fourth question was this, "I am originally from Oklahoma. I have been living in St. Augustine for the last four years, and I'm very thankful I have not needed a doctor's care or to be admitted to a hospital. My question is, when will a clinic, if ever, be made available in Orlando? And what are my options if I need to immediate care?" Well, I have to share with you, I'm not sure how we're going to know if an IH test clinic is going to be built in Orlando. The only way I can figure out to answer that is through Indian Health Services, and I guess we're gonna need to ask them. But I did get online, and I realized, and I looked up the address, and the closest place for care for you would be the Seminole Tribe Health Department in Hollywood, Florida, or the Indian River Health Services in Vero Beach, Florida. And kind of FYI, I want everyone out there to know that we have a new website. It's cherokeesatlarge.org. And if you'll Google this website, it will show you where all IHS clinics are located in the country. It will also give you information on things like pharmacy refills. For example, if you're not aware of this, if you can come into jurisdiction and be seen by one of our medical providers, and they prescribe a medication to you, that medication can be refilled by mail up for as long, up to 12 months, I believe, as that provider has written at no cost to you. And that is for At-Large citizens. So again, I want to encourage our At-Large citizens to take advantage of this website. Again, it's cherokeesatlarge.org. There's information on health care, education, there's information about HUD 184, if it's in your area. It's a very valuable website, and I want to encourage all our citizens at large to look at this and use it as a resource. Julia, what do you have to add?
These questions about health care are, I bet you will agree with me, are the most numerous questions that we ever receive. And the, I always tell people, "I wish I had better responses for you." The realities of health care for At-Large people in the Cherokee Nation are never satisfying. You know, to me, the responses that we are able to give are simply never satisfying. I do always try to explain to people what the situation is in terms of just general policy for Indian health care across the country. And I see the comments that are coming in on the chat on the side. "IHs services are lacking in southwest Washington." I'll tell you, IHs services are non-existent in the state of California, the state that has the highest population of American Indians in the state. There are only two facilities. They are for youth treatment and very, very specialized things, and they are on the reservations of local tribes. And so for general care for American Indian people across the country, this is a persistent problem. Most of our health care system, I want to just throw out some figures here. Our annual operating budget on the government side this year is approaching a billion dollars. Is that right, Mary?
It is.
That we're coming out of budget here in this time. Something like 60% of that goes to health care alone. It is also supplemented by the better part of a dividend of 40% of profits from Cherokee Nation businesses. I think it's 40%, it may be a little bit more even at this point. So, and I would say the majority of that also goes towards supplementing health care. In addition to that, we have payments from third-party payers, insurance companies, Medicare, et cetera. And in addition to that, we have some joint ventures for building, you know, facilities and things like that. It takes all of that to provide health care and contract health care to about 143,000 citizens within the jurisdiction. And as we know, not all of those people utilize Cherokee Nation facilities, right? That's 37% of our population. 63% of our population live outside of the Cherokee Nation boundary. And so what, I just want to give you those statistics, so it can help people to understand that it takes that much of our resources just to provide health services and contract health services to the people who live within the boundary. The reality is, we cannot, we just are not going to be able to afford to do it all across the country for everybody who lives at large. And so the realities are that what Mary has mentioned, and Indian Health Service has a website that you can go to that shows all of its locations. Those will be the places for you to go, to look toward. If you are close to the Cherokee Nation itself, or if you are going to make a visit to the Cherokee Nation, you can use Cherokee Nation health facilities within the jurisdiction for any of the care that they offer at those facilities. The thing that At-Large citizens have to be careful about is that for anything that is more complex than what is generally kind of the basic health care, so this includes cancer, heart treatments, right, any of the major kinds of things, we can't do those at those facilities, and most IHS facilities can't do those either. So those things have to be contracted out, and At-Large citizens have to be careful about that, because contract help will not cover it for At-Large citizens in the way that it will for those that live within the jurisdiction. The prescriptions are a great thing, what Mary just mentioned. That is a wonderful, wonderful thing. If you can go to a clinic within the Cherokee Nation boundaries and be seen at that time and get the prescription there, then yeah, you don't have to come back for that. You can continue to have that rebuilt, even though you may live, you know, around, halfway around the world even, right? They'll continue to fill it. So these are, the reality of health care, this is why I say, I just, I never feel like I have a satisfying answer to provide to anyone, but this is not just us, as we know. This is what Americans across the country are struggling with health care. Where to find it, how to pay for it. And I understand why it is that a lot of people are looking to their tribal government and hoping that it can be the solution for this. But we have to be, we have to be aware of what the realities are, and we have to be able to know where it is that we can go, if we do happen to live in a place where there are Indian Health Service facilities nearby. So that's kind of the not very satisfying thing that I have. Mary, do you have things to add or to correct me on, or anything about that?
No, I totally agree with you. It's not a satisfying answer, it is what it is. But for those who are able to get into jurisdiction to see a physician, and by the way, I would encourage you, if you are going to be able to do that and you're traveling a great distance, to call ahead of time and reach a patient advocate so that things can be scheduled for you and your time can be utilized, you know, to the best of what is possible, rather than just walking in. But if you can do that, you can actually get your prescriptions in the mail for up to one year for whatever the provider does write, and that could be a tremendous cost savings to many people, and I want to make sure that you all understand that. Again, go to that website, you know, cherokeesatlarge.org, and see what is possible there, because it is mentioned there, and I encourage you to do so.
Okay. I'm gonna, and Mary, you can see the questions on the chat as well, and one of them is, is there not, someone just answered, is there not a blood quantum percentage for health service? No, there isn't. You know, it is your tribal citizenship, but you can go into Indian Health Service facility with that. And one other thing to mention is that if you live within the jurisdiction of another tribe, for instance, here in Southern California, the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians is a large gaming, they're a small tribe, but large gaming is what I'm trying to say, and they operate some health care facilities themselves. And any tribal clinic of any tribe that accepts federal funding, if you are living within that tribe's jurisdictional service area, then you are eligible to use their tribal facility. We do that for the members of other tribes who live within our boundaries, right? So if somebody from San Manuel lives within the Cherokee Nation boundaries, they can be seen at any of our clinics or our hospital and so forth, because we accept federal funding. So that's a reciprocal kind of agreement that we make for everyone. There's another question here about those people who have Medicare or private insurance of some kind who utilize the clinics of the Cherokee Nation, and the question is framed, and there's quotes on it, "to not have to pay any money at all for their health care," and that someone who has full health care coverage should not be able to gain the system. I'm gonna reframe that statement a little bit, because these people who have private insurance or who have Medicare and are using Cherokee Nation clinics are incredibly valuable to us, because, as I said, that is a third-party payment that we can draw on. That is additional revenue that is coming into our clinics, and we need that revenue, and we really value the people who have private insurance and yet who choose to utilize Cherokee Nation facilities when they could go somewhere else, because it's extremely helpful to us to have those payments from those insurance companies in front of federal Medicare coming in to our clinics. So, do you want to address any of the questions that you see, Mary?
Yes, there is, there's one here, and it says, "Is it possible to fill a prescription without charge via mail for At-Large citizens who needed to get a prescription written but are unable to reach a Cherokee health system facility?" No, and the reason for that, that it's not possible, is because of the liability issue. First off, do you want to make sure you're diagnosed correctly, and they want to be sure that this is the medication that you need? No, you're not going to be able to get a prescription written if you're not able to visit a health facility. And I'm pretty sure that's probably true in almost any private practice. You know, a doctor would want to see you, examine you, and make sure they're treating you correctly. There would be tremendous liability if they misdiagnosed you or mistreated you with the wrong medication. So yes, you are going to have to reach out to a Cherokee health facility if this is what you want to do, and receive your prescriptions by mail from Cherokee Nation. And again, let me encourage you, if you were to do something like this, to reach out to a patient advocate, to make sure that everything is scheduled for you before you make the trip in, and the expense of getting there and the travel time. If this is something you intend to do, again, reach out to a patient advocate and let them assist you. And by the way, there is not a blood quantum for health service. If you can prove you're one-drop Cherokee, you're able to use our facilities.
Do you want to take the question? Can you address this one, where you're to visit urgent care in order to get onto a waiting list in order to see a provider? I've never encountered that personally, and I certainly never heard about virtual visits. I would think the liability issue that you just mentioned would come into play there. I'm not sure if it goes up here.
I'm just now seeing that. We were told we had to visit urgent care in order to get on a waiting list to see a provider for a prescription. No, I don't believe that's true at all. You can actually do walk-in visits through our Cherokee Nation health clinics, and at that point in time, meet with a provider and to get the prescriptions that you need. And I would encourage you to do that unless it's urgent that you receive that care. If you go into an urgent care facility, remember this, depending on what the situation is, there may be a limit or restriction as to what they're able to provide for you. In the state of Oklahoma, as well as many states right now, there are restrictions on things like opioids and drugs. And also remember that in urgent care, there may not be the facilities to do the tests that you need. Example, you know, x-rays, radi, x-rays and MRIs and things like that. So if I were you, I would probably walk in, I would do my best to call and schedule an appointment, as I have suggested, through a patient care advocate first, but I don't believe at all that you have to go into an urgent care facility to get, to find a doctor, to get a doctor, to get the prescriptions you need.
And I'm seeing lots of comments about virtual visits, which is why Mary's a better person. which is why Mary is a better person to answer the health court questions than I am. So this is actually something that's rather common these days. Do we do that, you know?
Do we do the virtual visits? Not yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we see that in our future. You know, that is something that is coming mainstream today. And, but I, I'm not aware that it's on our horizon right now, but I wouldn't be surprised to see it in the future. And by the way, I'm glad they posted my cell phone number here. Again, my personal cell phone number is 918-630-4000. Call me, I'll be happy to help you any way I can.
The question about the inpatient-outpatient address system in Rogers County. Inpatient-outpatient generally, well, you answer this one, Mary, if you can. I'm not, it's just not the language, as I understand it.
You know, I'm sure, and I'm merely guessing on this particular question, that perhaps they don't have the facilities to do the testing that may be needed. So perhaps they did go to the wrong hospital. You know, our different clinics have different services available, and not all of them are, have the availability of all the testing that may be needed. And I'm guessing that's what's happening here with Rogers County. I see it's about urology, the wrong hospitals. So I'm not really sure what this is about, if it's a contract health or not. But again, different, our different clinics have different facilities. And so again, that's why if, for at-large citizens, I would recommend that patient care advocate to find out if you're going to be at the right facility on what care you are needing.
What I've understood, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that Claremore Indian Hospital, because it is still under IHS, but we have not taken it over, its original clientele, I guess you could say, includes some who are outside of our boundaries. For instance, those little, those eight tribes that are up in the far northeastern corner of Oklahoma, I believe, are eligible for care at Claremore, but not at Hastings, for instance. So I think that there are some distinctions that are made because of just, Hastings generally only serves those within the jurisdiction, but Claremore has a little bit broader service area and service clientele. And so there are things like that that, that kind of have to be taken into account as well in terms of whether a person is at the right facility.
And that's true. What you're saying is exactly correct. And again, you're gonna need an advocate, and that's why I would suggest calling and asking for a patient advocate to make sure that you are at the right facility and that you're allowed to visit the one that you are attending. And that's why I would have to recommend calling and asking for that. That service should be available at all our clinics, and that should help resolve a lot of your anxiety and get you scheduled correctly.
One thing, and I will just say to be very, very careful about also is because we offer orthopedic surge services, orthopedic surgery at Hastings Hospital, and at-large people can access some of that. But if they have to have surgery, then we actually contract with Talakaw City Hospital with their operating rooms for that because we do not have that at Hastings itself. And so that's another place where at-large people have gotten caught in that because they've gone ahead and had the surgery, and this has not been explained to them, and then they have been responsible for the bill because that was contracted out to Talakaw City Hospital for the facility where they, the room where the surgery actually took place. So, so if anyone from, even from within the jurisdiction, I would really recommend that if, if they are referred out under contract help, and it's going to be covered by contract help, to try to speak with someone, as Mary is saying, and get, get approval in advance of that before.
If the service, if the medical service that you're needing is not given in that medical facility, then it is contracted to another facility. And that's the clue right there. If they don't have it available, unless it is another Cherokee Health Clinic, then it is a contract health situation. I know, and you have to be careful of these things. You know, I recently had a young gentleman, a young man and his wife, who were traveling a great distance, actually, for their first child, and they thought the baby was in trouble, distress. And so they live flighted the mother up to Tulsa. And it turned out that everything was going to be fine. But when they were discharged, that patient and her husband were charged for the live-flight service as well as for the hospital charge at the Tulsa Clinic, at the Tulsa Hospital. And so you have to be aware, anytime something is contracted out of our system, we are expected to come up with the money for that because contract help will not cover at-large at this time.
I see, I continue to see questions here, and they are questions about contract help that we seem to be addressing here. And I'm gonna actually move us on to the next topic here because contract help does not, most of our citizens, in fact, I would say virtually all of our citizens, contract help does not apply to us. If we do have additional time at the end of this town hall, then we can come back to some of the questions about contract help. Is that seem reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we will go on to education was the next topic, and we received a number of questions on. And the first one was, "Has any progress been made on opening up more of the many college scholarships that are currently only available to the 14-county residents, to all tribal members, including at-large?" One of the things that, that many people do not realize, the Cherokee Nation hands out a $2,500 semester college scholarship. Is that right? Am I right on the amount?
I think it's $2,000.
$2,000?
Per semester.
Okay. I was remembering more than that in the past, but anyway. The, whatever the amount is, we'll, we'll go with $2,000 because Mary's been on council much more frequently and knows, very likely knows best. So, the, the thing about these scholarships that the Cherokee Nation offers is that most of them actually go to at-large citizens already. And the reason for that is that any at-large citizen who is eligible for the federal Pell Grant is eligible for the Cherokee Nation Scholarship. So that's something that a lot of folks don't know. And, and if you didn't know that, and if you have a student who is eligible for the federal Pell Grant, then get online at cherokee.org and look up Education Services and, and check into that because your students should be eligible for Cherokee Nation scholarships. For those who are not eligible for the federal Pell Grant, the, the best place to look for resources are probably the Cherokee Nation Foundation. And you have the, the links that are on the chat there to go to these various places for, for resources. One thing I do want to kind of explain about the scholarship that is offered by the Cherokee Nation, that scholarship is funded by a motor fuel tax, right? By a motor vehicle, or a motor fuel tax. And what that means is that at the various convenience stores, especially the one there in Talakaw, when people stop in there to buy gasoline, that a portion of that is taxed, and that that goes into an account, which is discretionary funds of the Cherokee Nation. And that's what largely funds our scholarship program. We, and my feeling personally is that because it is predominantly citizens who live within the jurisdiction, who are paying for that gasoline and are paying for that tax, that that one in particular, it's probably reasonable to not extend it any further than the Pell-eligible at-large citizens and to basically leave that for the Cherokees who reside within the boundaries to be largely the recipients of it beyond the Pell-eligible students. They are the ones paying the taxes on it. They are the families that are funding that, that, those discretionary funds that go for that. So Mary, do you have anything to, to add to that or other thoughts about additional scholarship funding or to talk about what you do in terms of scholarship funding?
Well, right now, the past few years, I have taken my community assistance funds, and I have divided it up into scholarships, $500 scholarships for our at-large communities. And I'm excited to say that this year, all the communities have participated. I think there's a couple that aren't necessarily using it for scholarships, but they're using it for educational programs, which, which is fine. But it's a beginning, it's a way to help. And I'm, I'm glad I was able to provide that. I will share with you that Chief Hoskin this year requested an additional $10,000 for at-large scholarships. Three years, three years ago, well, I guess two years ago, when I first came on the council, I was not aware of one scholarship for at-large that went out of the state of Oklahoma. I did speak up about this, and I do want to share with you that since I have done that, that those scholarships have gone out of the state of Oklahoma. I believe that the first year, there were 10 that went out, and I believe that there were 10, if not maybe just a few more, this past year. But it's a beginning, and we're working on it. I do want to share that I have personally asked Chief Hoskin to come up with, if at all possible in next year's budget, $10,000 per at-large community to give out in scholarships. We may not get it, but asking's free, and I'm really pushing for it. So keep your fingers crossed, and maybe we'll be able to help our communities even more with scholarships.
One thing I'd really like to look into also is if we can, if Mary and I maybe in conjunction with some other people can innovate some ways to establish a scholarship fund of some sort independent of the nation. Because if we can find matching funds, if we can find partnerships of people who might be interested in making philanthropic donations to a fund like this, if we could build one ourselves. Because there, again, you know, the, the funding sources, I mean, the at-large Pell-eligible students are already seed-receiving the majority of Cherokee Nation scholarships. Our numbers are just so much larger than those of residents within the boundary that I, the reality is I don't know how much more we can look to the Cherokee Nation for this without beginning to take away from somebody else. And I, I think that's not what we want to do. We don't want to take away from the students who are residing within the boundary. So being able to find the ways to, to fund some things innovatively is, is gonna be a challenge, but one I really want to try looking at. We've got another question, which is specifically about, "I have a grandson at OSU who is a sophomore and a registered Cherokee. His residence is in Wagner County. Is there a scholarship via the Cherokee Nation available for him to apply for?" As we know, Wagner County is actually partially within Cherokee Nation boundaries and partially outside. So it depends on where his legal residence is. Is it within nation boundaries? If it is, then yes, he's, he's eligible for, for the Cherokee Nation Scholarship, which if you go up to the first set of links, you can see the Education Services College Resources link there. So he would look there. If he's outside the boundary, if he's in the portion of Wagner County outside the boundary, then again, the, the Cherokee Nation Foundation and some of the other links that are up there might be better places to look. Collegefund.org and things like that. Do the, the scholarships do not extend one mile out of the jurisdiction, do they? That's simply the funding to school districts. Is that right?
That's my understanding. There is, although, Julia, there is some within the continuous counties of Tulsa and Muskogee that are allowed.
Yeah. And then there's another one generally, which is about, "I'd like to know if anything is being done about education assistance and opportunities for those of us who live outside of 14 counties in Oklahoma." There are specific circumstances that are, along with this question, that I'm not going to repeat here, but my suspicion is that this individual and other members of the family are likely Pell-eligible, which is an incumbent qualification for federal assistance. And so the best, the best thing to do probably is to look into that federal assistance Pell Grant, first of all, and try to qualify for it, to see if you qualify for it. And then if you do, then indeed, come to the Cherokee Nation because everything is available to you after that. But first, look into the federal Pell Grant. And your student can do that through their financial aid counselor in their high school or in their college. And this is something that is very widespread and their financial aid councilor should know about it. If they don't, then they need to find another financial aid counselor because this is, this is a big, big grant program. So that would be the place to start. The last category here we have is, tonight is just called General. And the first question here is, "Why do we not receive per-cap payment as citizens of the Cherokee Nation?" And that's, I, I'm always kind of flip about that one, and my response is always because we would get about 50 cents each. And the reason for that is because we are the largest tribe in the United States right now. We are almost, we're, we are probably gonna go over 400,000 citizens this year, or in 2020, by the end of 2020. And while we have gaming, and our gaming is profitable, to make per capita payments off of the profit would be a really, a really good way, I think, to squander profits in a way that just would not mean that much to most people. When we are trying to make, if, if we were to try to make it per capita payment among, you know, hundreds of thousands of people, the reality is it's not gonna end up being very much to any of us. And if we keep those profits and apply them through our dividend, through our health system, into other services, into building other businesses, we will actually be able to assist so many more people in much more meaningful ways than to hand out a per capita payment that realistically would probably not amount to more than $300 per person. And a few hundred dollars per person, while it might make a difference this month for people, it's not gonna make a difference in our lives to anybody. Whereas service programs that help us to be able to help ourselves can do so much more. So that, that's why we don't. And that is not something that, I, I don't see our nation changing, you know, in that respect at all. Mary, do you have any thoughts or anything to add about that?
Well, no, I totally agree with you, Julia. You know, when you figure the dividend that we do receive pays for health, education, and housing, pretty much for the elders, you know, you know, that, that's pretty much it. But it's like you said, when we're nearing, you know, the 400,000 mark, it, the money, it's like you said, I think you said 50 cents. And I'd say maybe a few cents, even less perhaps. But no, I totally agree with you on that.
Okay, so we're, we're hearing background noise again. If people can be careful to mute their microphones. Okay, so we're, we're hearing background noise again. If people can be careful to mute their microphones, please. Okay. The next question we have is, who is the best person to contact with an inquiry requesting details of ancestors allotment land? And as well, how can said persons be reached? I think the best people to contact about allotments specifically is probably the Cherokee Heritage Center. Their genealogists that are, that are onsite there are available to work with Cherokee Nation citizens. They are trained especially in the Dawes Roll and in the whole process of allotment. So the website is cherokeeheritage.org. And the phone number is 918-456-6007. And the person to talk to, and many of you know him already, would be Gene Norris. He is their genealogist onsite and he works with these allotments and allotment deeds all the time. The real estate office at the Cherokee Nation is another place to contact for questions about the, the allotment deeds and the original, original allotment. So if you call the Cherokee Nation at 918-453-5000 and ask to be connected to real estate services or the real estate department, they may be able to, to respond to some questions as well. The other question I have is, do you or your colleagues have any information on whether such IDs, our tribal IDs, the, the photo ID would count when 2020 arrives and we need a government required real ID to board a plane or to enter a government building? And we are told that our photo ID is a real ID. I hope that's correct. Have you tried it, Mary?
Well, actually, I sent that message to, to our registrar, Frankie Hargis, and she replied back about two weeks ago and she said, to the best of their knowledge, that our tribal IDs are real compliant. And if not, that they will jump on, but to the best of their knowledge, at this time, they expect them to be compliant with the new guidelines.
Okay. There's a specific question about organizing a potluck three hours north of Phoenix and how to contact Cherokees in that area. We don't have any more access than you do to the registration data. The Privacy Act protects that. But if that person is on tonight and would like to contact me, I do have extensive information, which is voter data and things like that. Most of it is addresses rather than emails or phone numbers, which would be most convenient, of course. But, but anyway, I can maybe help out a little bit. Then we have a question about Cherokee Futures LLC and that's a, a topic that we can get into here in just a second, but let's go to the, to the chat because there have been some questions that have gone by while we have been looking at things here. And I just, I just caused mine to go away. So Sean, I need some help about how to get back on. I just lost my screen.
Okay, well, Julia, while you're finding, while you're finding a screen, there is one question here about Governor Stitt and our gaming compact. And I would like to share that the five civilized tribes have banned together and that they're doing a huge publicity campaign. It's very subtle, but it's there to show the importance and the significance of what the tribes have done with the revenues that they have brought in the current gaming compact. And I know that there are a lot of people who are waiting to see how this is going to pan out. I do know that there are many who think that once Governor Stitt realizes the impact, especially with the sports betting that may be coming to our state, that the revenues will even go up more so. And, but we're, the tribe is still working on this and I don't think anybody's ready to throw in the towel on it yet. But that's all I had to share on that.
And I would just add that, that's generally regarded as proprietary information. And so Mary and I may know things only a few moments before all of you do. You know, because we don't necessarily know anymore or am able to, are able to share anymore than, than what appears in the press, for instance. Some of the other questions that are here about the history class that, that used to be offered, I don't anticipate that anything that that's going to be coming back, at least not under the sponsorship of the Cherokee Nation. I think that the PIMS project may be sponsoring some things starting next year. And we'll, we'll see. We'll just continue to try to find some innovative ways to, to, to make that happen. Let's see, what else have we got? The status of the at-large community, the community initiative and the committee. I'm not aware of any timeline. Are you, Mary?
No, I, I do know that Chief Hoskin shared with us that he was going to possibly try to stagger the very first one so everybody wouldn't go off at the same time. And I do know that we, we have submitted a list of names that we would like to see, you know, considered for this committee or this board. And so far, to the best of my knowledge, nothing has been chosen as of yet. But I'm sure as soon as we know, we'll make sure we let you know. Settled or decided upon by our chief.
I, I kind of have the feeling that, as those of you in Texas and in Southern California know, at this time, there's, the chief seems to be on kind of a listening tour in a way. He's been taking the leaderships of the organizations to a working dinner the night before the community meetings. I anticipate we're going to keep on doing this. And he's really just been kind of trying to hear from the, from the leadership. I have a feeling he's kind of trying to get to, to know the leadership a little bit better and to get a sense of who people are. One thing I will say about the, the list that Mary and I submitted to him is that we were really, really proud by what a deep bench there is, that exists among the at-large leaders. And so we, we had a pretty, a pretty full list of recommendations to give to him. And I would anticipate that over the next few years, we're going to be seeing the positions on the committee. We're going to see a lot of, of leaders being brought in, right, to take a seat on that committee for a time, for a time period because we just have really, really good leadership. I don't know how, how much more eloquently I can say it is to just marvel. What are some of the other things that we have here, Mary? We have some questions about election reform.
Yes, I know you and I are looking forward to this. As a matter of fact, it'll be interesting to see at our next meeting on how we handle election reform. If we do it in a subgroup or if we do it all, the council is a committee on it. Because I think everybody has something to say and I think Julia and I firmly believe that we don't need a notary upon our but it'll be interesting to see at the next committee meeting on how we vote to handle this. But it'll be interesting, so stay tuned.
Yeah, they've put together what we're calling a working group. There has been some suggestion that maybe it should actually be a subcommittee. The differences would be that a subcommittee would be an official committee and would have to be an open meeting, just like the council meetings that are screened live and so forth. A working group does not. I could see advantages or disadvantages to both. But part of the process is that the Election Commission has some reforms and they're in mind and they're making recommendations. The Attorney General's office has some reforms in mind and they are making recommendations. From what I've seen from the, the Election Commission, there's, are concerns around what is previous, presently being called ballot harvesting. The practice that is legal under our law for people to just bring in boxes of absentee ballots that they have collected. The concern on the part of the Election Commission seems to be that they don't have enough time to count them and they want people to bring boxes in earlier rather than some, you know, questions about why are we even allowing people to bring in boxes of absentee ballots? So their concerns are maybe a little bit different than our concerns. And then the AG's office seems to have some concerns about the amount of dark money that seems to be entering into Cherokee Nation politics through the LLCs that are, that are being established. But I think, yes, for, for, for our purposes, I think Mary and I are in agreement that the, that the require, the notary requirement is probably the biggest obstacle to at-large voting. It has the impact of really suppressing the vote. And, and I would say secondarily, the need to request an absentee ballot every time also suppresses the vote because that's not something that a lot of states require. If you voted by absentee ballot in recent elections, they're going to send you one automatically. And it's time for us to think about, maybe we should do it that way too, I think. But anyway. We are at an hour approximately. There is a question here, which I think we can answer pretty quickly, which is tell about what the at-large committee is. We have about 25 at-large organizations that exist across the United States right now. And there have for the last, probably about 11, 12 years, there's been a nonprofit board organized under the Cherokee Nation that has sort of overseen this network of at-large organizations. Chief Hoskin made an executive order, signed an executive order pretty quickly after he came into office to dissolve the Cherokee Nation Community Association Board and instead to create what is being called an advisory committee that will instead work with the at-large community organization. So that's what we're talking about when we are talking about the at-large committee. The only other thing that is in our questions is, is the question that came in about Cherokee Futures LLC. And that is about the dark money that the, that the, that the Attorney General's office seems to be particularly concerned about in formulating its reforms around the issues there. So at this point, that's a rather complex conversation. And Mary and I are hoping to do this on a quarterly basis. So maybe, Mary, what would you think about if we put off a discussion of election reform and the LLC? And maybe at a town hall in the future, just talk about that one subject. Would that be a way to handle this, do you think?
I think that's a great idea.
And it was unfair because I publicly just put you on the spot, but anyway.
No, 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 I, I don't mind being on the spot at all, but I think it's a fantastic idea and I think that's what we ought to do.
Okay, so maybe we'll, we'll, we'll do that at a point in the future because that is a really, really important topic and just give, you know, the whole town hall, the whole hour to that subject. And, and if we could to hold our questions. We've got about a year and a little bit more before the whole midterm election process begins again. So we still do have some time to talk about this and make suggestions about reforms. So I think that's it for tonight. And I want to thank everyone who participated. We've had really, really good attendance this evening and great questions. And once again, thank you for your engagement with the Cherokee Nation.